Lord, I thank you for this opportunity to gather here together to guide and to lead the Staples community. I just pray over the council members and staff and administrators and leaders that are here tonight, Lord, that you would guide their thoughts, guide the discussions, and guide decisions too, God. Just help them to realize the importance of what they consider here and to pursue accountability to those that they represent and towards you as well. Lord, I just pray that you would bless each one, bless them personally and their families as well. Just bring them health and strength through all that they do, God, and just be with them as they discuss the business of this community. Lord, we thank you for the opportunities that you presented before us, and we recognize you, Lord, too, that you've established governance for a purpose, and just pray that you have blessed this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
The agenda?
So moved?
Motion by Mary, second by Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side carry. Approval of the consent calendar, minutes of August 13th, 2024, payments of bills.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, second by Doug. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side carry. Okay, the next item is a community concern for youth update. Haley, come and share with us what's up.
So I have some sheets here for you guys. So are you guys all familiar with CCY? I've been here in the past, but I think you guys aren't familiar with it. So we just give our yearly updates because you guys give us money to do this program, our community concern for youth program. We work in the schools. We work with law violations for first-time juveniles. We also are doing some mentoring as well with the juveniles in the schools. So I am looking today for you guys to pass that resolution so that we can continue to work with those kids. So that's why I'm here today. Just some statistics from the last year I have there that we opened 48 new cases, and this is all in Todd County because we're paired with Wadena County as well for our CCY program. So we closed out a total of 62 cases and completed successfully. We're 56 out of those 62 cases. So ones that weren't successfully completed, they may go back to the county attorney's office or the referral source that they came from. We did in the last year some community service hours and some volunteer hours, which is out volunteering in our community garden out by Legacy here in Staples. And then we donate all of that produce to the area food shelves. So this year with the garden, it's not looking as good, but we still are donating some, and hopefully this fall we can get some more donated. Working with kids with truancy has been a big issue. We are trying our best, and we're trying to come up with some new ways to get kids to go to school. So I'm working with all of the schools and the human services department to try and get them on board to do some mediation meetings to make sure that we can get kids to school. We also have been doing incentive-based activities. So kids that are on for mentoring, we take them out on activities throughout the summer. We have done a lot of activities this summer with the weather being nice. We've down below some of them that we've went on, the big ones being the Twins games, the Valley Fair, biking, kayaking, and Duluth. So we get money for that, and we write grants as well to get that to be able to take kids out on those activities. It's a pretty big thing for kids because a lot of times they don't get to do any of that stuff, and it gets them out of the house in the summertime and doing some pro-social activities other than playing video games and sitting on their phone, which they usually tell us that they would be doing if they weren't out on these activities. So working this year in the schools again, working with the community, the families, making sure that we're holding those kids accountable that are coming through for law violations, making sure that they're doing their community service hours, that they have an online class that they usually have to complete depending on their crime that they commit. So with that, I am just hoping that you guys will pass that resolution and continue to support CCY. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me now or my number, and my email is up on top there, too.
And we've already approved the resolution.
Okay.
I should have told you that pressure.
Oh, that's fine. No, that's totally fine. Have you guys sent that over then to?
I don't know. I like to do a check.
Okay, because I looked today with our financial lady, and she said that they haven't got it yet. But maybe she missed it too, so.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Insurance issues I hear about on TV, things like its national eye probably, but are parents held responsible for getting their kids to school? Or where does the gap? Are they leaving the house but not getting to school?
Some of them.
Leaving the house?
Yeah, so it's a little bit of both. I mean, there's kids that just don't want to go to school, and then they'll just stay home, and parents just don't care. And then there's the parents that do care, and either they refuse to go to school, and then that's where we get involved, or yeah, they're going, they're saying they're going to school, and then they're out and about, or they go back home because the parents are working, and they don't know that they're at home. So it's a little bit of both. It's been a big issue since COVID, and we're trying to come up with some other solutions that we can try and help these kids because it's getting worse and worse.
Is there any legal obligation for the parents to get the kids to school?
So eventually, if they're on the CCY program, they're not doing well, then they can be filed for truancy, which they would have to go to court for, and then they can be placed on probation for six months. If they continue to not go to school, then we can do violations, but it takes a long time before we can even get them placed out of the home. So that would be pretty much the only consequence for the parents.
There's kind of a law that mandates that parents get the kids to school.
Well, they're supposed to, but there's, holding the parents accountable judge is, it's not working. So the main thing is placing them eventually out of the home. That way the parents then don't have that responsibility to get them to school. Yeah, it's hard.
Is there, there's nothing you can charge your parents with, except through the court system?
Maybe eventually, like, I don't even know. We have never had that in as far as I've known. The only thing we've gotten to is placement for kids.
I mean, maybe the charging with the parents would be the first thing they do instead of the last, but I mean, I understand.
For sure.
Can any of the students do online? And think they're going to school and have to show progress as they're doing that?
Yep. I've had a lot of kids go online, but then we also get them if they're not doing well online. So then they'll be filed for truancy and have to go to court for that, too. We've had kids that have went homeschooled, and if they go homeschooled, there's no helping them because they're on their own, and they don't get anything, any, from the state. They don't check up on them. So they're pretty much just gone.
Oh, that.
Mm-hmm.
So if they're being homeschooled, don't they have to meet requirements at hand to show that they can work or anything like that?
I don't know of either. Once they go homeschool, we usually don't have any contact with them. Yeah. Because usually we're in the schools on a weekly basis, so that's where we see all of the students. So we don't usually go to their homes or anything. So once they're homeschooled, then we usually don't work with them anymore.
Do you work with the ALCs as well?
Yep, we work with all of the freshwater in Todd and Wadena Counties. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Haley.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for passing that as well. Sounds good. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to call or email, okay?
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Consider second reading and adoption of ordinance 550 amending section 18-1B3 and 18-9D related to public nuisance.
We talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but basically what this is doing is amending our nuisance ordinance to allow, in addition to certified mail and/or personal service, the ability to attempt personal service twice and then post it and have it considered served. The certified mail process, you know, it can be over a month before we even find out that they didn't get it. And when you're doing grass nuisances and things like that, that just doesn't work very well. So I think this would be a great change and kind of speed that process up.
So once you post it, then you take a picture to show that it's been posted, and they get to the dog eat it or?
Yeah, it would be considered served in the eyes of the court, you know, and then we can go ahead and mow it or clean it up or whatever.
The public nuisance thing that somewhere along the lines changed from being, or the police and athletic properties to complaint base. And I can think I could speak to probably everybody here that looking around their town, complaint base isn't working because people are absolutely not willing to call in their neighbor and say they got too much junk in here because of fear of repercussion or repercussions or whatever, and they don't want to be. And I understand that, I would think that back in the day, the police department would drive around and look and spot nuisances, and they would take action. At least once a year, our police department, it used to be the chief and the city clerk did it. And then I ended up doing it for a number of years where we had to inspect the properties and delve into that way. I just don't think we're keeping up with our nuisance end of it and getting the results. Probably we should get, I don't know, a complaint, I don't know if that would change the ordinance or it was something that happened when Nate was here, I think.
Yeah, I think with Nate and Matt.
But I think whatever we did, if we did change the ordinance, we should put that back, getting that out of the.
The other component to that, Doug, is the, you know, we kind of shifted more to trying to utilize the courts, feeling that that would be a deterrent. I think that's not the case. It gets lost and bogged down and drug out. And so we're, I was actually talking with Joe Kruger last week about starting to revert back to the 10-day or two-week notice and going in and cleaning it up. So, but yeah, it, obviously the courts don't want to deal with it. The process takes forever.
I can speak from experience when I was on the police department. If we wrote tickets to the ordinances, they would eventually just get thrown out. They don't want to deal with any ordinance violations or lease back, not basically.
Yeah. And we've had, I mean, we've actually had people go to jail over garbage in their yard rather than clean the garbage up, which kind of confounds me, but anyway.
So do you want to serve, is it, do we have to change the ordinance so within 10 days then we can go and mow the lawn or pick up garbage or whatever?
I think, I think grass is five. Yeah, yeah. But the problem is the service side of it, which this would take care of.
I think anybody that sees it needs to call the city, not just police or, you know, anybody, not just my neighbors. I'd call them money.
Is there, is there a time period, I didn't read it, whatever we did, I didn't read it, but is there a time period on the service or can you serve them, or can you try to serve them in the morning and then in the afternoon?
Basically, what it spells out is on two separate days, one of which, the first one during the day, the next day between 6:00 and 10:00 p.m. And then if there's still no answer, you can post it in a conspicuous place. So it'd be basically a two-day process. As I said before, I recommend we approve the second reading.
Motion, motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Doug and second by Blake. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry. Consider approval of second amendment equitation of easements, covenants and conditions, restrictions and restorations of Valley View neighborhood common interest in, you know, community number two. What's all that about?
That's a very long title for something that we already approved, but there was a reference to a wrong exhibit, so the recorder wouldn't record it. So it's a do-over. This has to do with the stuff that we replanted up in Valley View from duplex over to single-family lots to remove those from that common interest community. So we've approved it once. This time the exhibit is correct. So I'd recommend we do it again.
Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Doug. Any questions? Discussion? Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side carry. Okay, consider request of sacred heart Catholic Church to do a raffle on October 27, 2024, at Sacred Heart Catholic Church, 314th Street, Northeast.
So received an application for the gambling permit for Sacred Heart to do a raffle.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Blake. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, aye. Community reports in pass. Carry. Listen up. Park and Rec advisory report.
Park and Rec Board met on August 13th here a couple of weeks ago. Talked a little bit about our drain project over at the community center. The contractor that we had lined up, do that had an equipment, piece of equipment breakdown, so we're waiting for that to get fixed. Lacy updated everybody on swim lessons. Total of 266 kids participated with swim lessons. We did, had MMUA do kind of an unofficial safety inspection walkthrough over at the community center. One of the things that was pointed out was the fire alarm system. And so we had Northland, what's it called? Is it Northland Fire Protection?
Nardini.
Nardini. And I think it was the same, yeah, the same place. But we've got, you know, basically, at the community center, you pull the lever for the fire alarm. There's no smoke detection or fire, you know, fire detection over there. So we were wanting to check and see if that could get tested. Nobody will test it because it's so old and outdated. So we're still working on that, but the system, if we were to replace it, the one, just the one estimate that we got was 32,000. So probably not rush right into that. She wanted to let the board know about that. Still working with FEMA. We've got technical review meeting actually tomorrow afternoon with pile of FEMA people and our architect on the storm shelter project. One thing that was brought up was the Todd County inspector came out and did their annual inspection out at Tower, and people were still burning garbage in their fire pits. And we've got signs up. They're in the rules, everything else. Basically, what the board is recommending is that we implement a system where we penalize or fine the campers if there's garbage in their pit when they leave in the morning. So board is recommending that, and we'll look at bringing that, you know, adding that to the fee schedule in the camper agreement for next year. Picnic tables are in, put together and being used out at Pine Grove. Talked about new playground equipment and stuff that was put up in June. Exploring, doing, you know, a few off-street parking spaces up at Wilson Park, keep people off the grass. And let's see here, we had right before 4th of July, this is kind of a whole summer worth of things here, so we haven't had a couple of meetings this summer. So right before the 4th of July, the pump on the shower house went down, and Johnson and Son Weld running was able to get there and get that fixed. And volleyball, there's some question about how many teams based on building hours, but we did get that figured out now so that we'd be able to run the full volleyball schedule since that meeting. So meeting ended at 5:56.
Any questions? Any planning and zoning?
So planning and zoning, we do have one item to bring to the council that we're looking for some action on, but had really two items on the agenda related to planning and zoning. One had to do with our sign ordinance, and at the previous meeting had had some discussion about doing a review of the sign ordinance, in particular as it relates to dynamic displays. Sign ordinance was put into place back in 2009. A lot's changed, obviously, in that 15-year period related to dynamic displays and, you know, technology in general. But one of the, one of the things that we were, that we were looking at was our ordinance does not allow you to put a dynamic display on the wall of your building. You can put a freestanding monument sign out in front of your business, you know, that would have a dynamic display on both sides, you know. Question is, why? You know, why can't you put it on your building? But, so kind of going through a review, talked a lot about dynamic displays, think planning and zoning, you know, generally would support allowing them on the building. You know, the question is, you know, what size? Does one size fit all? Should it be a percentage? So just having a lot of discussion related to that. Brightness was another, another thing with, you know, the concept of light pollution and, you know, a dark night, does it kind of shine in your bedroom window, that type of thing. So we will take the feedback from the commission and bring them proposed, some proposed language at our next meeting. And the other, I'd received some communication from Lois Knizel. Lois is up at 603 Spruce, and there's a couple of handouts in your, in your packet. Let's see if I can share this up on the screen so everybody can see what I'm talking about. So up, up in Valley View neighborhood, the very first house that was built in Valley View was built within two inches of the property line. And Knizels, I think, bought that, I'm guessing somewhere around 2017. And obviously, we're not aware where the property line was, but, you know, the house issue was preceding them. But they also have some raised planter beds and some trees and stuff that extends out into that next lot, which we own. It's a new lot that was part of that planning process. And Knizels expressed an interest in buying that lot. You know, we had talked at one time about selling a 10-foot strip to them, but ultimately with the discussion of planning and zoning, looking at the preliminary plat for some of those lots wrapping around. If you look at the, let's see if I can get. So this is the preliminary plat. We do have, you know, three proposed lots kind of on that curve where by the time you put the house in there, the backyard is pretty skinny. And the discussion of planning and zoning was to, you know, if we were to split off a portion of this lot, that would include trees and the trees and planters, it would give more opportunity to kind of widen the backyards and make those next three lots more desirable. So I did, you know, after the planning and zoning meeting, I did reach out and have a conversation with Knizels. Council had set that 70 cents a square foot price for, for the lots out there. It'd be, you know, roughly 10,000, you know, it hasn't been surveyed or anything like that, but, you know, be roughly about 10,500 square feet that Knizels would be interested in acquiring. And if the council is agreeable to do that, you know, then we would go to the next step and draft a purchase agreement and, you know, where they would, they would pay for that, the cost of the survey and closing costs.
So are we, once it's surveyed, then that would be, what the value would be based on the survey, that we put a couple of square footage?
Yeah, they, they should be able to draw it up pretty good. When I talked to Jim Kramer, he's like, you know, sometime when I got somebody over there, I'll shoot in where those, you know, where that tree line is, and then they can draw it up pretty good. I, you know, I basically took the Wadena County GIS map and drew in the shape, you know, which is kind of an approximation, but that's where the 10,500 square feet comes in, so. But I didn't want to have survey costs or legal fees if the council said. Heck no. What was the Planning and Zoning Commission thinking?
So are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, if we can just get a motion to go, you know, go to the next step and like I say, we'll bring a purchase agreement back.
I'm ready for motion. Second. Motion by Doug, second by Mary Jo. Any? Any further discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All same sign carried. Open forum. Yeah. The administrative board.
Just a couple of quick items. We've got a charter commission meeting scheduled for the seventeenth of September, I think. Ring a bell? So it'll be at five o'clock here. We got the closing on the lot, on this lot one block two with Donna and Michelle Solga tomorrow. So they'll be moving forward with their project this fall yet. Reminder of the budget workshop, next Tuesday, the third, at noon here. And also on next Tuesday, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with Norrison for our airplane hangar project out at the airport. So we're kind of things are a little up in the air on whether that's going to be a fall or a spring build kind of coming up against that end of October, November timeline for actual construction start, which makes me a little nervous, so. We'll see. We'll have that conversation next week. That's all I have tonight. What's your questions?
Move to Jane. And who's the Jane? Is there a second? A second is it? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All same sign carried. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.